Good evening, I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for Monday, January 13th. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. I just want to remind everyone that our meeting is being taped by Dartmouth Community Television, as well as through our high school here, and it's replayed throughout the week for your viewing pleasure. And I just want to make sure everyone, including myself, turns off any kind of put-your-phone-to or electronics to vibrate. All right. Roll call, please. Kathleen Amor, here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Carol Karafotis.
Here.
Shannon Jenkins. John Noons.
Yeah. Dr. Jenkins is stuck in traffic.
Yeah.
Literally.
Yeah. All right, so the first on our agenda, you'll see that we have allowed 10 minutes for public comment from the audience, so if there's any topic that's listed on tonight's agenda that you would like to come up and speak to, I ask that you step up to the podium and just state your name. We're all friends. Don't all run. Okay?
Take that as a no.
That's a no, okay. Next on our agenda, we have the approval of the, actually, let me make sure I have this correct, the regular and executive session minutes. From December 9th.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the regular session minutes for both December 9th and December 16th.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous. And I also would entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes for both dates as well.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes for both December 9th and December 16th, 2019, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
I'll second that.
All right, a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous. And next we have, we're very fortunate to have our student representative, our Dartmouth High School student representative, Sophia Wait, here to update us on the activities that are taking place at the high school, and I understand that this is your last time up here with us.
Yep.
Well, it's been a pleasure, so thank you, if you don't mind giving us some update on what's been going on.
So, we just came back from our really long two-week break, so we're coming into our second week, back strong. We have, our report cards are gonna come out on the 20, grades are closing on the 28th, and we're gonna head towards the second semester. Some kids will be changing their classes for their half semester, for their half-year classes will be changing, so a lot of kids will be ending gym and going into those electives, such as creative writing and media studies, things like that. This past week, Thursday and Friday, there was a DECA competition. I was there. Ms. Kane, who runs the club, Mr. Schress, Mr. Galletto, and Mr. and Mrs. Noons, they took 62 Dartmouth High School students to Hyannis for the regional competition. Thirty-three of those students qualified for the state competition, with many receiving individual recognition on their written test and role-play performances. So, DECA is a club that meets once a week after school, and it's a business-related club to prepare each student for the business world, and the competition is broken into three parts, written tests and two role-plays, that act out business-related issues and scenarios. So, the Dartmouth High School debate team went to a state tournament in Newton South this past Saturday. Sophomore Colin Zoo represented Dartmouth High School by going up on the stage and making it to the final round, novice exporaneous speaking, which is where they give you some information, and you have a certain amount of time to make and memorize a speech, which you then perform. Senior Brennan Rigo, Quinlan Roscoe, who is a junior, and Ali Hazzar, as well as sophomore Evan Garcia, all performed strongly in GD, which is general discussion, which is the most common debate situation, where everyone sits in a room, and they're judged on the best way that they can come up with a lively conversation based on current events that are provided, based on an event that is provided, and it's on the spot, and you have to think quickly, and give every, come up with supports to each argument as they come at you, so it's a very fun and very challenging thing to do. So, the Presidential Advisory, Principal's Advisory Council met with Mr. Tebow and Mr. Gelschott to discuss various tech-related issues. A lot of the Chromebooks have been having some trouble with the Wi-Fi, because there's just so many students logging on, and so many teachers are utilizing that resource, but with all those kids coming on to this one shared network, a lot of, there's a bit of interference, so they're being, so they discussed that, and the input was helpful in informing decisions related to the technology as Dartmouth High School moves forward, because this is basically the first full year with the Chromebooks and the second year that they've been in place, but again, last year, they weren't in effect for the entire year. So, the Dartmouth High School Counseling Department hosted a current student from Harvard University, who met with 10 interested students during their PACE period, to discuss about mission process and everything that you need to know if you want to go to that Harvard, Ivy League school, or similar schools, so that was a success, and everyone learned a lot. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Sophia. It's really been a pleasure.
Go ahead. Yeah, Madam Chair, just in relationship to the DECA competition this past Thursday and Friday, our wonderful student rep, Sophia, was also involved, was one of the participants, and she was in the hotel and lodging individual event. She took second place overall, has a nice trophy, which she forgot to bring tonight, which is fine. Overall, and also took first place in her written test, so she got a nice medal for that. So, Sophia is one of the 33 that have qualified at this point in time for the states, the end of, the end of February, 28th and 29th of February, I believe, is in Boston, so... But all the students, and just while she's talking, I just want to expound a little bit, I mean, all the students did well. I mean, it's a little nerve-wracking, you know, I sit there and I judge, and, you know, they've got 10, you know, they don't, they get their information, what they have to put together, their performance, you know, that morning, they've got 10 minutes to present it to the judges, type of deal, and it is wonderful to see the students, you know, thinking on their feet, and the students that we have, all 62 of them in all seriousness, you know, exemplified Dartmouth pride and Indian pride by being there and what they did, and, you know, they had a great time. So, it was wonderful, it was a wonderful, and again, our student rep is one of those.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, Sophia.
I didn't miss those two days of school, so I'm gonna get going, I have a good amount of stuff to work on.
That's fine.
So, thank you all.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Fantastic. So, we are a little bit early, but next we have, the best part of this job is having you come in, people come in and spotlight on our kids, so tonight, we're lucky to have, I see Mr. Robidoux, Dartmouth Middle School presenting on the Spotlight on Kids, so if you don't mind stepping up.
All right. I'd like to thank Mr. Dome for giving me this opportunity to speak here.
Shot, straw.
If he wasn't here, I, 29 years of invitations I could do. Would be easy enough, but my biggest concern was not going to the Quinn School instead of here tonight for this meeting. But it's sort of a full-circle moment for me. 12 years ago, I gave my first presentation here at the high school, and I get to do my final one here, also at the high school, so it's kind of a nice full-circle moment for me. With that in mind, Dr. Gifford, I'd like to thank you for your support through the years, and trusting our direction, and putting up with my optimistic cynicism. The school committee, I'm Heidi Brooks, I mean, I remember eight, seven, you know, seven, eight years ago, we did the SIT plan, and you wanted the words "Dartmouth pride" in our SIT plan about seven times, and what's nice, though, is I look at the school committee, and that's what I see, you know? It's been really nice to work with you, your support of the special ed programs, your in education, coming out of retirement to support us, the music program, so that's been really nice, and then the community tonight, bringing their children, is sort of typifies what Dartmouth's all about, so they've given us a really nice canvas to paint on here for my 30 years within the system, but enough about me, let's get on with this. So, we have our spotlight on our kids, being a history teacher, I'm just gonna do a little bit of history. I said I'd have a brief introduction, but Mrs. Gettner didn't know 20 minutes is brief for me. But it'll be five minutes, relax. But just a brief history, you know, three years ago, we presented to the school committee about this Highlander, and personalized, and blended learning stuff, and then that summer, we presented what we were doing, and after the presentation, I heard my favorite question from Dr. Jenkins, hopefully she'll get out of traffic, but she said, "What do you need?" And we said, "Chromebooks is what we need." And then we were supplied with one-to-one that year in our eighth grade, and we've gotten some COTS to help out with our seventh and sixth grade, so I know we talked a lot about blended and personalized learning as we've been here through the years, and so our goal tonight is to show you, if you remember, my essential goal is, that's great, but what does it have to do with student learning? Students tonight are gonna let you know how it's affected the way they've learned. We've talked about the transformation that it's had in teachers, and we've readjusted our student practice goal, there's always a buzzword in that, student agency word. Basically, it's empowering students. It's nice to give them the voice and choice, but now they're starting to take pathways for their, for their own learning, and that's what it kind of means. I like the voice part. About 50% of our kids are intrinsic, they're not outgoing, they're kind of intrinsic kids. I remember my daughter, a very intrinsic artist, her proudest moment in middle school was when she played kickball in the gym, she never kicked the ball, she could always hide to the back of the line. So, that was, I was proud of her also for three years, that she avoided kicking the ball for three years in gym. A great moment for all of us. But that's, those are the types of students that we have, and one of the things that technology does is it makes sure that their voice isn't hidden, and I think you're gonna hear that, and you're gonna have some of those people typical of my hand, that'll come here and speak tonight about how that's done to them. They're noticed now, but they're not hidden, and I think before, they could just be hidden and not noticed, and so now, this has given them that vehicle to kind of be able to say that. The old strategy of ask three, then ask me, now it's Google it, YouTube it, and social media it, right? That's, we all, that's the new way of kind of getting hope, and that's the way they're connecting within the classroom, that they're presenting those types of things and making those connections, so the whole voice and choice, the ability of these students to now find their pathway, as well as our staff, who trained themselves for three years, they've all been trained over three years, to kind of present these strategies, we're certainly proud of. And maybe after this, Dr. Jenkins will ask me the same question, I think it might be the same answer, but I'm not sure, we'll see. Imagine walking in a classroom, and this is what you see. You know? You're ready for the test? Take it. You're not ready? Study independently. If you're not ready, meet with the teacher. I mean, who said we all had to take the quiz the same day? I mean, when I was first teaching, you had to, because you had so many papers, and you had to do it, and, but who says you have to test on the same day? When you're ready, you test, and now with technology, you were able to give them other activities beyond that, so walking into a classroom, and that's their pathway. I mean, I'm sure some of these have seen this in their math classes and so forth, and are able to do that, they're using quizzes to prepare for tests, and they'll show a slide later on. One of the things in the slide is, we're just kind of saying the other day, why are we giving kids study guides, why can't they make their own? And so, that's one of the things we did the other day, and we gave them five minutes to make a study guide in class, they filled up four pages of links. Now, why do we, why do we have to give them a study guide? They can find their own, plus we can steal their good stuff, that's always the next thing. So, I want to bring up my coaches next, to introduce, our coaches, or thank you for supplying us with coaches. Their role has transformed, they're in the classroom all the time, they ran a PD for me today, so, I mean, their roles are even transferring more than that, so it's been a nice thing to kind of have that. Temple's made up a video for you, so the first person will be up will be Temple, my colleague, my friend, my former player from 1985, I believe, something like that, so she's gonna come up and kind of get the ball rolling, and this is a spotlight on kids, so let's get going.
All right, so what I have put together for you is a quick video, and it is only a snippet of what we see every day. There are many things that happen throughout our day, but before I start the video, a couple of things I want you to recognize. The music that you're gonna hear right in the beginning was student, something that a student developed, so I said, "Great, I'm gonna grab it," because this one student kind of struggles, but this is a passion, loves doing it, and, but he told, he made sure, he said, "Make sure you give me credit for it, Mrs. Mitchell." One other thing that I think is really neat to see and hear, I introduce it as well, so you'll see it coming, is an animation. There's a student, we run a talent show, and there was one particular student that loved working on animation, but did not want to get on stage, did not want his voice to be heard, and honestly, didn't want to be interviewed face-to-face with anyone, but he had a lot to offer, and this was something that he loved doing and worked hours and hours on, so that's another piece on here, that to me is that, you were saying, they're not hidden anymore, there's a voice there, and we're not, we're seeing them. So, here is, I'm gonna try to, hopefully it doesn't buffer. That music is the one that's created by a student. I had to play that end, because more music developed by the student. So, I think what we'd like to do right now is bring up our coaches and our students. You saw, the coaches were in the video a little bit, as well as some of the students, but there are some things that we'd like you to hear, so...
So, we've been working on choice and voice for a while, and one of the things that became very exciting with the eighth grade one-to-one was the ability to take it school-wide. We decided to do novel book clubs, and the one-to-one technology allowed students to actually be in the same book club as another student from a different block, and so I wanted to introduce some of the eighth graders that did that. This year, you'll be able to hear about their experiences with that as well.
We use technology in the math classrooms all the time, and the snippets from students that you read about, that was actually math class. The best thing is, kids can really work at their own pace, they can revisit so easily and re-watch a Khan Academy video if they're struggling with a topic, hear it as many times as they need to, to get it. The quizzes is something we use a lot, that students can use to practice and retake and go, and go get it. The instant feedback for when a student has done something correctly, a little bit correctly, to come back and redo it right then, they really want to know what they did wrong, and they go back, and there's no lag time between that and an error log, which they usually have, and it really helps them, and we have the students here to talk to you about how it's impacted their learning in the classrooms.
Hello, my name is Teal, and tonight, we want to talk about how one-on-one Chromebooks have helped us in the classroom. So, one of the ways it's helped us is that we can move at our own pace, so we don't have to wait. If we understand something and someone else doesn't, we can just move on. Some of the other things that go on is that my teachers can have more personalized conversations with students who need a bit more help understanding certain things. Also, the physical workload of bringing home like four binders compared to just one, because most of our textbooks now are, we are able to access online through our Chromebook that we bring home, back and forth from school.
Hi, I'm Haley. One thing I want to talk about that helps, that our Chromebooks definitely help with, is something I remember specifically from ELA class. We all had a book club, and we all get to pick the own books that we wanted to read, and then, once we were done reading a certain amount of books each week, or amount apart in that book, each week, we would go into our Chromebooks and type out a response about the certain topic that the teacher would post, and we all got to see each other's responses, from even kids that didn't share the same teachers as we did. And I think that definitely like opened us up to being comfortable to using our Chromebooks, and especially kids that maybe wouldn't say those things if they didn't have a Chromebook in front of them. It's, you saw things, other sides of people that you didn't usually see if you were having an open-class discussion. So, I know I saw a lot of things on there where kids were very open about how they felt about the book, and their feelings, and it's people that you wouldn't expect to hear from in real life, so I think that's one of the ways I really liked how the Chromebooks helped us.
Hi, everybody, my name is Robbie, I'm in eighth grade, and I think that society is definitely changing, and technology is growing and continuing to expand the world, and I think us having one-on-one Chromebooks is just introducing us to all of the new technology that we'll have to experience in the world. And in math class, as you've seen on the slide, we got to pick our own study guides, and I think that everybody learns at their own pace, everybody learns different, so we got to study a certain topic in our own different way, and we got to the point of 100 on a quiz, or 100 on a benchmark, in our own way, and something that suits us. So, I think having a one-on-one Chromebook has just really helped us and made us comfortable with each and every subject that we have. Thank you.
My name is Sydney, and I'm in seventh grade. The seventh graders don't have one-to-one Chromebooks, but even when we do use Chromebooks in class, it's very helpful for knowing the results that you get immediately, instead of having to wait two or three days for our teachers to correct every student in the block's test, or quiz, or even the homework assignments. I like having Google Classroom, because our teachers post what they do every day, so if I forget the homework, then I'll know what we had to do, and I can always just ask one of my friends to send me it if I did forget it.
My name is Sarah, and I'm in seventh grade, and I feel that one-on-one Chromebooks would be very helpful for us, because lots of kids like go at their own pace, and if we need to write papers, it's easier to type up, because some kids, they don't like writing things out, because it takes too long, or they feel like that people can't read like what they do, so like in ELA, if they need to type up an essay, it's way easier for them, and they can do it at their own pace.
My name is Elizabeth, and I'm currently on the robotics team at the Dartmouth Middle School, and I'm also in seventh grade, so we don't have one-on-one Chromebooks, but my team is full of six people. We have two captains who are in eighth grade, and then four of us who are in seventh grade, and it's getting really hard, because we did just have competition around a month ago, and we had the, we did not have one-on-one Chromebooks, but the eighth graders did, so we put on the Lego Mindstorm on their Chromebooks, and we use their Chromebooks to do our robots. So, I'm saying it as like, because robot, Dartmouth is getting into robotics, which makes me really happy, because I know that students are going to make that their dream, just like me, so one-on-one Chromebooks would help with both the technology school and after-school with robotics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
That's our presentation and so forth. Any questions for our students?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, well, thank you, Mr. Robidoux, to all the staff, the coaches, for coming out here tonight, it's always a pleasure to see exactly what's happening in the schools and right down in the classrooms, and I think, I think this was quite a, quite a good persuasive presentation to why we need to look at making an investment into Chromebooks into grade seven, is that what I'm hearing?
Sounds suspicious.
Was there any, was there any coaching?
I haven't even gotten to the argument yet.
Okay. That, that being said, you know, I'm pleased, like Mr. Robidoux said three years ago, you know, what could we do to make it, how could we help, and we made the investment into Chromebooks. And we made the investment into Chromebooks and the one-to-one at the high school level as well as at grade eight. And it's clearly, even I see it with my own daughter who's in grade eight, is making a difference, I think, just with the collaboration piece and giving those students who are the, the introverts or the ones that don't like to share as much as some of their colleagues or some of their, some of their fellow students and give them that opportunity to collaborate, not only in school but at home. I think, you know, I think we're definitely changing the way that, that we're teaching. You know, I guess, I guess I'd have a question for maybe one of the coaches and Mr. Robidou as, how, do you feel that with Chromebooks being in place and just through the 21st century learning environment, do you see the role of a classroom teacher changing to be more as of, of a facilitator in more than just getting up in front of the, because I see it, I guess from my perspective, I see it, so I just.
I agree, there's a little bit of that.
There, there definitely is a little bit of that. One of the students even alluded to how teachers are planning differently. You plan the Google Classroom and it goes out to the students. And they can look at that when they get home if they had a problem with the lesson that day and are encouraged to do that. And resources stay up there that they use. So they're looking at the same things that were used in the classroom, which I think Mr. Robidou talks about situational memory to us sometimes where when you're in that situation and you see something and then it brings back the memories better. So I think that's helpful for students in that role. And another student alluded to the personalized learning. And I know when I'm in a classroom, working with teachers and we're using the technology, they're astounded at how when the kids are all working on something that we've set up and you've sent out to them, you know, you can plan it and put the date in. So you can plan something a week ahead of time, put the date in and it goes out that day. So you know that you're doing that. But students get to things and have issues at different times and have different issues. And you get more time with each student individualized. Because it's not that you just said, let's do the lecture and here's the worksheet and they're all raising their hand because they got to that one hard problem at the same time. And now you want 25 of you in the classroom. Now they're getting to things at different times. And you also have, you can say, did you watch the video one more time? And it's the kid that watched the video one more time that still needs support. And the other kid said, oh, I got it because I watched the video one more time. So really personalize that learning experience for the students.
I think in, I think in a larger sense too, what I'm seeing in the English classrooms is that it's becoming less about students producing the answers that the teachers are looking for and more about the students doing work and coming up with their own thoughts and their own answers. So it's less about, you know, whether you got something right or wrong, but it's more about what you're thinking and how you got there. And I think the technology has allowed students greater opportunity to do that. And so the teacher's role is changing in more of an evaluator and facilitator way and less of a deliverer of information.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. LaFevre.
Right. Well, I think definitely the role of a teacher has definitely changed since Chromebooks have come into play. And now teachers can just give us an assignment and we can work at our own pace instead of getting 10,000 worksheets and having to stuff them into our binder. Right. And just them being able to give us more of a voice in how we more think about our feelings about a certain topic instead of there being one answer that we all have to achieve, we get our own voice to just.
Sure. That makes sense.
One other thing I was thinking of is from the heart of it, as a teacher, I think the roles have changed, there's been a shift. So we got into this profession because it's rewarding. It's rewarding to be able to help people learn. So when you had a smaller classroom size, it was rewarding when you saw you taught the class and it was a lecture style and you could see that the students got it, those aha moments. And then there was a bigger shift when you started adding students to the classroom. A little less rewarding. You didn't see it as much because now what you, the time and what you had to teach was a little daunting. And your hearts are screaming because you know there are students that are at one level and you have other students that just want to grow and soar. Well, now we've got another shift and we have the technology. So now the technology has given us the rewards back again. We are now seeing the students grow, the ones that are, maybe need more help. Well, they're growing from that, the picture that Carl put on there, sit in the middle if you need some help with the teacher. But yet you have students over here that are taking the tests because they've taken it, they already understand it and they get it and they're moving on. And then you have others that are in that middle phase. But you know where you are now with the technology because of the feedback, because of the information that we can gather from students. So I'm sure, there's been quite a shift. And with the technology, we're in a new shift with the classroom sizes that I think are bigger. So it's been helping us in that sense. I think those teachers are now feeling, starting to feel a little bit better about, I can get to all of these students, even though I, you know, numbers are higher. It's just is, it is what it is.
Exactly.
Well, thank you all for sharing your views with me. And great job to all our student presenters.
Anybody else?
I'm just thrilled to hear what's going on in your classrooms and the teachers' classrooms at the, at the middle school and I know across the system. When I graduated as an undergraduate, which was, I'm sure many years before most of you were born, it was hammered into our heads about individual differences. And we were supposed to go out and recognize that not everybody's at the same place and not everybody learns the same way. And you had, as you mentioned, you know, a group in front of you and you were trying to move the classroom so that you could address everyone's needs. Back then, we didn't know really what computers were or they would take up a whole room with one. So needless to say, we have grown. And now I see that one of the most important tools in individualizing instruction and personalizing instruction is going to be a technology. And I'm so glad that you're using it and using it effectively. And thank you for all your work. And I know all the teachers across the system, I know they're all out there doing the very best they can to meet the needs of all students and this is just one other tool for them. So congratulations and your, and the students, you were so eloquent. Thank you for your presentations. Great.
Yeah, not much I can, not much that I can add to it. I know my grandson was in eighth grade last year. He came home, he had his Chromebook and was able to do his homework and, you know, really enjoyed having it type of deal. Someone made mention about writing assignments on the, on the computer and everything else. And, you know, people and, you know, somebody like me who's, should have been a doctor with my handwriting, yeah. If, you know, back then, when I was in grade school or something, the computer would have been, would have been nice, but so be it. But, you know, my congratulations to, number one, to the students in all seriousness, it was just excellent how you presented. Very clear, very concise. And, and I appreciate that. And to, you know, Mr. Robidou and the administration and the, the teachers, the faculty that are here, job well done with everything that they're doing and keep it up. And I guess with budget season, I guess, you know, the fact that, you know, maybe we have to have a discussion on that.
Yeah, I mean, I echo my colleagues. Just, this stuff really excites me, just to see the level of personalization and how you can reach more kids effectively. And just watching that animated video where that kiddo is just, that is just, oh, unbelievable to know that he had a choice and an opportunity to just, you know, give that to us and allow us to see that, that work and that talent in that way, in a different way. And so you all bring something different to the picture in our community. Everyone in our community brings something different. It's just wonderful to see kids know that they're supported, whether they need that extra individualized work, whether they know that they can kind of go on their own pace and reach a higher level. It's just fantastic. So really kudos to all, all of you at the middle school and everyone in district. I mean, I see it just trickling into all levels, into the elementary level and my, and my own, for my own children. And it's wonderful to see because all that can come from this is, you know, wonderfully productive, creative people for, to lead us in the future. So it's wonderful. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
That was great.
Really good.
Yeah, you, you guys are good to go if you, unless you want to hang out. Yeah. Like, see you later. All right. Bye. Almost right on time here. Thank you. So next we have some new business. And first on that list is some information, some amendments to the, the.
Old business.
What was that?
You got old business?
Oh, do I have, oh, I'm so sorry. Skipping ahead. Oh! So we have that in our packet as well. So we added our dates through the end of the year. Anything to say about that? Anybody have any conflicts or, I mean, that looked good to me?
Yeah, hopefully it's.
Okay. What's that?
I'm good.
Yep, that's next.
Next meeting.
That's our next meeting is the school choice.
Seventh of January. And we'll be scheduling budget subcommittees, you know, meetings in between. Yeah.
Just to go along with Madam Chair, just to go along with the 20th, the meeting on the 27th, we could just have some, some data just showing us what our enrollment is for the high school to help guide our decision on school choice.
Yes.
Can we get some finance information with that? Madam Chair, could we get some finance information with that, please?
Sure.
Without reinventing the wheel.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have that.
Probably goes with the enrollment, but usually we get also a printout of how many students in each class. That's really helpful. Thank you. Okay. And next we have the, go ahead.
You want to motion to approve those dates?
Do we need a motion to approve those dates?
Yeah. No.
Okay, no, that's fine.
As long as you can all come.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be there.
Okay, and next, Mr. Kylie, you will present the revisions that you made, I mean, that you're bringing this back to us now, the fiscal year 2125 capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Ammaral. So relatively minor revision, very similar to what we talked about at the last school committee meeting. But I did put the sort of placeholder at the end of the plan for implementing the facilities master plan that was a recommendation from last time. So you'll see that on the detail, on the more detailed page, you'll see that at the, at the bottom of the plan with obviously no, no dollars attached to it at this point.
Right.
Certainly something that we need to keep on the radar and have a discussion about in the, in the future here.
Thank you. Okay.
Other than that, it's principally the same as last time.
All right. Anybody have any additional questions? So this would need a motion to approve.
If you're so inclined, it would, yeah. We'd like to.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the FY21 capital improvement plan.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on favor? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Kylie, when? You get ready to present this to the CIP? If you let me know, I'll gladly be moral support.
Thank you. I'll probably know five minutes before the meeting.
Okay, well, thank God I'm only down a hill.
Maybe it'll be different this year. But, but yes, I'd be happy to let you know.
Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Now for new business. So in your packet, you'll see that there was a letter from Ms. Cooper from SMEC. There are some amendments that needed to be made. I hope that you don't mind. I didn't think that it was necessary that she be here. In reading, you can see it was pretty clear-cut and adding a district and changing some verbiage.
And I can answer. I can answer any questions. As being the Dartmouth School Committee Rep to SMEC Education Collaborative, this is pretty much just some housekeeping things here. Our last SMEC meeting, we just discussed modifying or bringing up to date the articles agree, the Articles of Agreement. The big one is that we received a request from the Fall River Public Schools to enter into membership with the SMEC Education Collaborative. This is actually a really good opportunity for SMEC to, to grow our program and ultimately offer more services to our member districts in which Dartmouth is a member district. In addition to, to that big piece of the Articles Agreement, there are some other, some minor verbiage changes. As you can see, the highlights in red. So there's that piece that'll require a vote. And then the second vote would be on the updating of the capital improvement.
Capital reserve.
Capital reserve policies. And that's at the end here. And that would be, those changes are in red, that's on page 30. And it's basically just increasing the maximum balance of the CIP account from 250,000 to 500,000. And then in addition to, just some verbiage with the leasing of buildings. So I'll entertain any questions if any of the members have that.
Does anyone have any questions?
Fall River is joining now. Where were they, where were they getting these services before?
So good question. Right now, the Fall River Public Schools, as my understanding, that they do use SMEC services for, for some of, for some of their students. The problem is they're paying the non-member rate, just like the SWE collaborative's work. If you're not a member, you pay the non-member rate. So I know that there's been some discussion on their school committee that they're, they have several suited populations that they could really use some help with and they're, they like what SMEC has to offer in the programs that we have in place already and the potential to, to grow some more programs as well.
Good. All right, thank you. Great. So I would entertain a motion.
Just take them separate.
Okay, oh, boy.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the amendment to the Articles of Agreement for Southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative, AKA SMEC, as presented, allowing the city of Fall River School Department to become a member.
I'll second that. Any discussion, more further discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. And next.
That's the one for the capital reserve, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Chair, make a motion that we allow SMEC to increase their capital reserve account from 250,000 to $500,000 as presented to us.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That was the last one, right?
Thank you for serving on that committee.
Yeah, thank you.
Cut a lot out of it. Enjoy it.
All right, well, next we have under new business, the proposed, the anticipated proposed 2020, 2021 school calendar that we've reviewed.
Are we voting on this tonight or is this kind of like a first read or?
You can, or if you'd like to just take it back and take a peek at it. Notice that Labor Day obviously is a little later this year. So we're looking at first two days for teachers, August 31 and the first, students starting on the second. I didn't get enough payoff to offer, to propose two weeks at Christmas again.
I know.
People were pleading, but. This year was great, but, so we put that in there as the, just coming, obviously the three days in December and then letting, getting out on the 16th barring, you know, snow days. So other than that, really no. But certainly we can vote on it and there's no hurry on the 27th if folks would like to take a peek at that. like to take a peek at that.
I would, Madam Chair, I would just like to ask if there's any appetite. I think getting out on December 23rd being the last day of school, I know that's always, always tough for travel, and then being just the following day being Christmas Eve, so I'm not sure what your feelings are, Dr. Gifford, or what my colleagues are on extending that one more day and making the last day of school be the Tuesday, December 22nd. I don't know, if you've looked at other districts, or if you've spoken to other colleagues, or if it's all over the place, but...
I think everybody would be in favor of that, especially for travel. At the very least, perhaps a half a day on the 23rd, but I, I would be in favor of the 23rd of the day off.
On the flip side, what that would do for the, with no snow days...
Right.
That would still...
Seventeenth.
Get us out on the 17th.
Right.
Yeah.
This is one of those years, because of the way leap year falls, it's just going to be a late year.
Right.
Yeah, unfortunately.
On the flip, makes a short summer, but that's...
Yeah, I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, I was looking, I was looking to make, to say, you know, with the way Christmas was swollen, to at least be in school Monday and Tuesday type of deal. I was good.
Yeah, I think that's...
I was good, I was, I'm good with that. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, you know, Monday and Tuesday is fine if we go through Wednesday, you know.
Okay.
Prepare to vote on that?
Well, if you...
With the, with the...
You want to bring it, you want to...
Want to edit it and then have it come back?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
As long as three of you are.
I am. I was thinking half day, no day. I wasn't sure, but I'm...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
No day is fine with us.
Okay. I'll make a motion, we approve the...
Nice long vacation, people. Come back happy. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we approve the academic 2020, 2020, 2021, count, say that fast three times, calendar as presented, with the one change being the Christmas vacation in December of 2020 will end, will start at the end of the school day on Tuesday, December 22nd. And the last day of school in June of 2021, barring no school, no snow days, or no any other cancellations, will be Thursday, June 17th, and that is a half day.
I'll second that.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion about that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Fantastic. All right. All right, next, we have, yeah, update, superintendent update?
Yeah, I have a few things for tonight. Let's see. Mr. Doan let us know that Kim Rio, one of his teachers, was named Teacher of the Month by Fund 107. I guess a letter from one of the students.
Very nice.
See, that's always nice when you have, you know, when you're recommended by a student, so that was good. I don't think we, it seems like we haven't met in a while, but then there was vacation. But we also were able to, at the South Coast Education Collaborative, they have a yearly luncheon, and they have the member schools recognize one of the students, some, similar to what we do with the superintendent's award at the end of the year. So I asked Mr. Tebow, and he met with his folks, to pick a student that we thought, you know, is successful, achieves, but one of the things we like to focus on is someone that kind of, especially being a collaborative, really works with other students and has compassion and is involved in a lot of those things. So anyway, Erin Kacia was chosen, I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that right. She brought her dad and her sister to the award ceremony, the luncheon, it was very nice. And it's really for the Francis W. Galishaw Scholarship Award, and we all know whose that is. It's, which I was unaware at the time, but named for Jonathan Galishaw's dad.
Really?
Who was the superintendent over the, over in that area, and all of that. So it's a $1,000 scholarship, so that was nice. So we were happy to, happy to be there with that. We also have had, the iSTEM classes, group clubs have started at the elementary, and this year, 260 students signed up, so you can see what a success that is, and we're running two eight-week sessions for that. We've been recently meeting with the elementary admin team, continuing always to work on safety and security and rolling out more practice with students, specifically with the Alice model that we use. So over this next couple of weeks, the elementary folks will be working with their staff a little bit more on preparing them for running students through mock drills, where it's going to be scenarios that are announced over the PA, and then the teachers get to talk up to the kids about, what would you do if this was true, kind of thing. So we're one step at a time with our, our younger kids. I have a bunch of things here. Oh, we had a wonderful, I believe you got in your packet...
Yes.
...donation from Steve Tetrow, a former student, and he was able, he was, did so well with the art program. I talked to Judy Cronin about it, he's donated $20,000 to the art program, to be used as they see fit. So, and we also know that he told her that he was just so moved and impressed with the art program here, and has been so successful that he wanted to do that for us. So that was well received. You heard about the DECA program tonight, so we did, Kate did pass out to you all of the students' names that were successful with that. And what else have I got here that I wanted to let you? Oh, the SEAL of Biliteracy. We are going to be starting at the high school, allowing our, or actually promoting and pushing our students to take the SEAL test in their language that they're studying. And then with that, students that achieve a proficient or advanced on the MEMCAS as well as the language test will receive the SEAL of Biliteracy. And it's just a nice distinction that they can put on their resume, et cetera. And what we're going to be doing is getting like a SEAL and to putting on their diplomas and recognize them at awards night and et cetera. This year, so far, we think we'll have around 20 students taking that exam. So that will be adding to that. I just found out tonight that we just received a $15,000 grant for financial literacy. So the governor's office have, you know, they're really promoting that across the state, really. I've been to webinar, on webinars, et cetera, pushing that students really learn more about financial literacy. So we did put in for a grant, and so I'll be to be able to provide some professional development, curriculum development, and being able to offer our high school students financial literacy. And the plan will be to, I believe, we're still with the plan we talked about during the PACE period, where all students will have access to it, not just students that have to sign up for it. So again, we did that, and we are just in the process, this week, as of today, submitting our two grants for computer science and the engineering program at the high school for the project Lead the Way. So we've been working on that with some of the teachers and the staff, and those grants, Tracy was texting me, she was having trouble with the computer science, but was in contact with them. So those were going in today as well. And that's what I have for you tonight.
Lots going on.
That's a lot, yeah.
Lots going on.
Lots going on.
Yeah, I, next is the report of the chair. I really don't have much to add to that and to add to what Sophia mentioned earlier today and Mr. Nunes, but if any of my colleagues have anything that they would like to announce or, that's happening, that they, no?
I've got a couple of things. First of all, do we need to take a vote to accept this donation, Mr. Nunes?
We, we can.
Mr. Kylie?
You can as a formality.
We can as a formality.
Me, I can accept on part, on behalf of the school committee. But certainly, it's always nice to put a stamp of gratitude on it, and we've written a letter of thanks, as you know.
Yes, I think the, I just think that's just a wonderful, wonderful...
Absolutely.
Offering.
Incredible donation.
Fantastic. It'll go, I'm sure it'll go a long ways to our art department.
Oh, yeah, Judy was all that. She thought maybe it was like a thousand or something.
I know, I read the letter, and then I saw the check, and I was like...
Pretty nice.
I'm sure that'll brought a smile to her face and to a lot of our students, so...
I did the same thing when I printed everything out over the weekend, and I went, hello.
Is that a two, is that a one? Is it a...
Yeah. So as long as you, if everyone's fine with that, that's fine.
Yeah, we're okay.
Okay, also, I'm really happy to hear that we got the grant for financial literacy. I think that's desperately needed in our high schools, not just here in Dartmouth, but across the board.
Everywhere.
It's so true.
Because, you know, our students graduate from high school, and they go on to college, and a lot of them still have difficulty balancing a checkbook or just learning daily, daily finances.
And that, the credit card does come due.
That's right. Yeah, yeah, there is a due date on that credit card.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, last but not least, I would like to see maybe in the next month or so, something on the agenda for the facilities master plan, just to maybe start a discussion, maybe, maybe we...
Do it.
Look at a subcommittee for this, to take up the issue outside of our regular meetings, because I don't want to let this go.
Yeah.
You know, I think Dr. Jenkins said that at the last meeting or the meeting before that, but I think it's important, especially to get this, at least something in writing to share with, to share with the rest of the town, that, so it doesn't come as a surprise in five to 10 years down the road, that we're going to be looking to renovate a school or build a new school. So that's all I have.
Is that something we could get within the next?
Sure.
Great. Fantastic. Anything else? No?
I'm good.
Our next meeting is here at the high school on Monday, January 27th, at 6:30, and again, that is, will be posted as our, no, that's not the public hearing, no.
School choice.
School choice, sorry. Public hearing for school choice.
You are correct. You are correct.
And so that, that time will be posted specifically in advance. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to provide an update with respect to collective bargaining with union personnel not to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Oh, roll call. I'll get this one day.
That's right.
Yes.
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Carol Karafodis?
Yes.
John Nunes?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.